Go ahead and call the November 28, 2011 City Commission meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. If there's anyone from the public wanting to comment on any issue not on today's agenda, come on up to the podium. Okay, we'll move on. No awards and proclamations. We don't have any public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we're onto the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of November 21, 2011. Item 6.2, award of contract for the replacement of the roof system membranes on the auditorium of the Sina Community Theater to SNS Contracting in an amount of $46,000. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of four wastewater pumps from Smith &amp; Lovelace Incorporated in an amount of $56,121.
I just have a quick question, maybe for Mr. Gage or Mr. Bangston. Is the theater insurance claim, is that just because we combine insurance premiums with them in order to get a lower rate, or how is it we're involved in the roof on the theater?
Well, there's two ways we can be involved to kind of give you the broader answer. One is our contract with the theater, we deal with the building type components like that. From an insurance perspective, I don't have the language in front of me, but I believe that we, I'm trying to think, I believe we do insure the building. Is that correct, or do we not, Greg? Do you recall? I know we don't the contents.
The, I'm speculating a bit, but I believe during the period of time that we held ownership in relation to the claim would have been a factor. I'm sorry, I can't speak to that specifically as of life.
So we were owners of the building when the claim arose, I think.
Well, we were actually owners of the building and the property, and even without that, we still carry some of the same responsibilities with regards to the building. So part of that hasn't really changed, but that timing makes sense with regards to the insurance being an aspect of it.
Okay. Is there any item a commissioner wants to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We do not have development business, so we're on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 1110-625, ordering the acquisition of certain interests in real estate for the use of the construction of the East Magnolia Improvement Project.
Ordinance 1110-625 was passed on first reading on November 21, 2011. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment on this issue today? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve second reading ordinance number 1110-625, ordering acquisition of certain interests in real estate for use in construction of the East Magnolia Improvement Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 11-10625 on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Householder.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Angel.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.2, authorize the purchase of eight police package vehicles. Chief Hill.
Our request today is a little bit unusual. We'd like you to authorize the purchase of eight police package vehicles that we wouldn't put into service until one of them would go in 12, but the other vehicles most likely in 13 and 14. As you probably read in the blue sheet, the Crown Vic Police Interceptor by Ford, this is the last year for that vehicle. And our police fleet, with the exception of a couple Chevys and a Dodge, consists almost completely of police interceptors. And there's a real distinct advantage in having one common vehicle because we pass equipment down from model year to model year. They have not changed that much over the years. And we realize some cost savings as a result of that equipment being passed down from vehicle to vehicle. Equipment such as lights, light bars, ballistic panels, siren, prisoner cage, Portland window bars, rear seats, which are plastic seats that we bring in and out, mounts for the in-car computer, shotgun, et cetera. And they can add a lot retrofitting a new cruiser to the price of a cruiser. In early 2011, we purchased four black and white Crown Vics, police interceptors, and the base purchase price of the vehicles was $28,278. We didn't really spend anything for the equipment because we moved the equipment from the vehicles that we traded in. But if we had to acquire new equipment for those vehicles, Ford, the Mark cars, it would run just under $12,000 a vehicle, everything that I had mentioned. We recently had a cruiser that was damaged beyond repair out on the interstate, and Bob Peck had located another cruiser that you authorized the purchase of in Texas from Philpott Motors. It's my understanding that they're one of the larger police fleet dealers in the nation for Ford. And Mr. Peck found a stockpile of new 2010 and 2011 cruisers in their inventory. We purchased one, it was very satisfactory, it met our specs, save for a power seat. That was typically about the only thing they didn't have that we normally specify. We have an aging fleet. Typically, we put 45,000 to 50,000 miles per year on a cruiser. They go 24/7, 365, the black and whites do that you see in the field. While we're only going to replace one in 2012 that you authorized, in 2013 and 2014, because of age, condition, mileage, we're looking at probably replacing 11 cars in those two years. So when we looked at Philpott, the vehicles that they have, compared to the new pricing, which is going to be around $29,000 a vehicle, they have white vehicles, unmarked vehicles for $22,448, and black and white cruisers, they have five of them left, I believe, for $21,715. And these are 2010 models, the Mark cars, and the white cruisers are 2011 models. But some significant cost savings from the new vehicles that we would probably be purchasing as Ford goes to a new, smaller police interceptor. Staff feels that acquiring the Crown Vic Police Interceptor from Philpott Motors' current inventory presents us with a very good opportunity to realize some significant savings. This is the thoughts of the city finance director, who actually came up with the idea and ran it by myself and Bob Peck. So we got the brain trust together, and we said, "We can save some money if we acquire these vehicles now, and then we just put them in service as the need arises." And our proposal is to purchase and warehouse eight Crown Vic Police Package Vehicles. We'd actually be warehousing seven, because in 2012, that'd be the vehicle you've already approved, we put that into service, to be used in our fleet as our existing stock of vehicles is depleted. And five of the vehicles will be black and white, that's all they have, and in black and white, and three will be used as investigator cars. And this will provide some real savings over the next several years. Law MacArthur has agreed to serve as delivery and preparation agent for this purchase. We're currently working on identifying storage locations until such times the vehicles are needed, and we would maintain the existing replacement schedules. And then vehicles retired from the fleet would be sold at auction or otherwise marketed as there really wouldn't be an opportunity to trade them in. However, typically, trade-ins, we do not fare well on trade-ins, because these vehicles are used up as police cars, and although they might have 120,000 or 130,000 miles on the odometer, they have spent significant time idling, and it's all stop-and-go city driving. So typically, our trades run from 1,000 to 4,000 per vehicle, depending upon the dealer and who gets the trade. We would be purchasing 2010, 2011 models. And lots of people say, "Well, if you purchase a vehicle now, you don't use it for a couple of years, or you purchase it into the new year, you're buying depreciation." We wear our vehicles out. So depreciation really doesn't bother us too much, just because we put so many miles on the vehicles in such a short period of time. There's also a non-fiduciary advantage to this approach. This will enable us to defer acquisition of the new models and allow other departments and motor companies to test and evaluate and basically improve the new models. We wouldn't be getting first model years. All this really does, though, it'll, we have some savings up front, but it basically defers the inevitable. We're going to sometime down the road, even with this purchase here, we will acquire new vehicles, and much of the equipment that we use right now will not work. We really can't tell you what that will be, because we don't know what the vehicles will be once we go out to bid. But the numbers there are from the city finance director in the fiscal note, but if we proceed with the replacement of vehicles as originally scheduled with newer vehicles, the new vehicles 2012, we anticipate the costs of replacement to be $264,500. And if we proceed with the staff proposal that you have before you, the total cost for those vehicles will be $185,119, and we'll basically realize a savings of $79,318. In summation, our proposal will essentially help us to acquire and equip eight new 2010 and 2011 police vehicles for the price of five 2012 models, and provide for much of our police department fleet needs into 2014. I thought this was kind of a novel idea, and I just read right before I came over here that the Long Beach, California Police Department had the same idea. They have a fleet of 109 marked cars, and they are purchasing, they have purchased and warehoused 106 black and whites to be placed into service over the next three or four years. So they, I don't know if Rod read that first, and he came up with that idea or not, but again, clearly, we didn't anticipate this opportunity as we were preparing the 2012 budget. However, the finance director has identified budget resources that could be applied to the proposal as follows. We would use the $30,000 that we already have, you've already approved in the vehicle equipment plan for the purchase of a white car. We have, in the 2012 General Fund Vehicle and Equipment Plan, unused authority of $13,000. In the 2012 Special Sales Tax Vehicle Equipment Plan, we have unused authority of $16,000. And then, use from the 2012 budgeted contingency, we budgeted $210,265, and we could use $126,119 from that. According to the finance director, this will leave us about $85,000 remaining in contingency funds for 2012, and historically, expenditures from the contingency account have varied from nearly nothing to $200,000. And 2011 expenditures to date totaled approximately $6,000. Our recommended action for your consideration is authorize the purchase of eight new Ford Crown Vic Police Interceptor Police Package Vehicles from Philpott Motors in the amount of $175,919, $175,119, to be placed into service over the next three years, regular rotation schedule. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Chief, one thing that I didn't, I was kind of rolling in the back of my head, how often does the city use any of the warranty out of a car? And I wonder about sitting there for the two years. Will we wear these cars out before the warranty, even holding off two years would be up anyway?
You know, I have to defer that to Bob Peck. I'm not exactly certain on that. Do you have any idea, can you come up, Bob, and address that? We would not take physical possession of them until January.
Okay.
I'm not real sure about the warranty, since we're going to be, we're going to be stockpiling for the two or three years.
Right.
That was an issue that was not considered, I guess.
Sure. How long do we typically, typically get out of these cars? About two years?
You know, we used to get two years out of them, but we've been stretching it as much as we could possibly stretch it. To give you an example, we've got one that was just, the insurance company deemed a total wreck.
Sure.
They were going to give us $5,000 for the car. We can't replace that car for $5,000, so we're having that car rebuilt. We talked them into rebuilding that car. And, but typically, it's probably two and a half years before we get them replaced on a patrol car, and at that time, they'll be, we've got one right now that the paint's falling off, and we're getting painted, and it's got 119,000 miles on it. So it's just, they're hard-to-use cars.
Sure.
And typically, warranty runs out very quickly. So that is a consideration. But if you've got, was it three-year, is it three-year warranty? Three-year 36,000 miles. If we put them into service.
We're going to be done.
At the two-year mark, within that first year, that's the only warranty we're going to use anyway, because we're going to have 50,000 miles on it.
Good, good. I just, it was a factorable cost.
Sure.
But if it's worn out within that three-year.
It's something that completely slipped the minds of the brain trust. So, good question.
Every now and again, we think of something up here. But it sounds like it's covered, that we'd be fine, we're going to wear that warranty out within the first year of use. We're not losing anything, so that really kind of negates the cost. So seems like a good idea.
What type of expenditures have been used in the past out of this contingency fund? Have we used it in the past for vehicles or equipment?
Oh, I can't say for sure. Rod might be able to say, but because it's a contingency, really, it's open-ended, it could be anything.
Anything, okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that we authorize the purchase of the eight police packages vehicles as presented by Chief Hill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the commission authorized the purchase of eight police package vehicles from Philpott Motors in the amount of $175,919. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.3, resolution number 116863, authorize an agreement with Community Access Television of Salina Incorporated for public educational governmental television programming services through the public access channel and a community interest channel.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The city's been under an agreement with Community Access Television, the wise-known as CATS, to provide public educational and governmental television programming and services to Salina since 1992. And you'll see a pattern of about every four or five years executing various agreement amendments, '93, '97, 2002, 2007. The current agreement's scheduled to expire at the end of this year, so obviously, we're at a renewal time, and we talked some about that during the budget process in June, July, and August. A little quick history, in 2006, the Video Competition Act of Kansas changed franchising, it took away the city's franchising authority over the cable company, but the other things that it did is because of that, as a result of that, Cox Communications eliminated one of the direct revenue streams to CATS that was valued at about $145,000 per year. So that was a big impact. One of the other impacts of that is they were able to reduce the number of channels, which again, used to be public, educational, and governmental, from three to two. And then, in 2007, the city's agreement also changed, and that created a declining proportionate share of revenue, was in essence, trying to reduce the reliance on city resources over time. And started at a 70% level in 2007 of the city franchise, cable franchise fee revenues, and came down to 50% this year. Next year, it's scheduled, would be scheduled under, if the contract was just renewed as it's written today, to be at 40% in 2012 and stay there with future renewals. Kind of as a sidebar note, Salina County and UST 305 do pay into CATS the direct cost of production services as well. And in addition, Salina County also contributes nearly $15,000 for online and other similar informational services, just to get an idea of others that are working with them. Earlier this year, CATS asked the city commission to continue at the 50% level versus dropping to the 40% for another couple of years, and then decline that back to 40% by 2016. So in essence, slowing that decline down. And during the budget discussions, the commission's direction to staff was to go ahead and renew the agreement, but at the 40% revenue sharing level. So what we have for you is an amended agreement with CATS that's proposed by staff, and it contains the following provisions. A 40% cable franchise revenue sharing allocation, a three-year term with three-year renewal increments, which is similar to the current agreement. Revised Section 1B, which is fairly similar, but just really takes in consideration the changes that were a result of the Video Competition Act from three to two channels, and re-characterizing the educational governmental channels as a single community interest channel, so combines two of those channels into one officially. It preserves the same terms that the other terms that the prior agreement, or current agreement, I should say, has, that deal of scope of services, open use of the access channels, insurance identification, copyright, and some of those types of things. So those are the same. Kind of a final note, during that time, there was a concern from a handful of citizens that attended the meeting and had concerns about community access television folks, and at that time, they were asking for like a city to take more control and oversight of the operations. And we, your legal counsel and I, we talked about that to a degree, and part of it is, is at this point, we've not ever been provided with any evidence that they haven't performed those aspects under the contract that they're supposed to perform for the city, that they haven't performed those appropriately. So there's not been any evidence that's been provided to us that that has not occurred. But the other aspect of that is that what they deal with is really in the realm of free speech, and that's really difficult, because it's easy for government to step in and end up censoring and modifying free speech. So there's not really a clean way for you to do that if you wanted to. So based on that, and if you do get into violating that free speech aspect, you compromise the community access part, public access part of that, and we have concerns about that. So we're really recommending that you stay with the basic same structure of the agreement and not modify that, and certainly put the burden on governance with the model that they have, which is a board of directors, and a manager that manages that function. The, kind of a fiscal note, the average annual cost to the city for this agreement's approximately $216,000. That'll vary based on how that cable franchise revenue comes in. That's based on the 40% of what would be an estimated $540,000 in that revenue stream. Really, that is a kind of a positive, I guess, budget position for the city of approximately $54,000 compared to if that would have stayed at 50% versus 40% allocation. So by going ahead and dropping it to 40 is about a $54,000 impact. Conformist with strategic plan, one of the goals is to make, so Salina can be a city that has connectivity both physically and socially. Certainly, this really is probably more of a social-type goal with that, because there are a lot of folks that may not have the capacity or ability to come in and participate in our meetings, or volunteer as much as they'd like to. And by having a lot of our meetings televised makes it a lot easier for them to in essence feel like they're truly involved in what goes on with the city government, and it helps with the openness. So we do believe that simply having an agreement does help with that strategic plan goal. So we've given you a couple options. Approve the resolution that's attached, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for public educational governmental television programs, programming services with Community Access Television of Salina, or do not approve resolution, the resolution 11-6863 at this time. Obviously, there could be modifications and other things that you might want to look at as part of that. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions. And Marcia Stevenson, the executive director of Community Access Television's also here, and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer questions that you might have.
Is the term of the agreement correct, or do we need to modify that on page?
Yeah, I believe you have a modified version up there of that. That provides it to be a three-year term.
Yeah, mine is.
Yours is modified.
It's section 19, that, when I subtracted 12 from 15.
Mine has January 1, 2012 through December 31, 2015.
Nothing.
Yeah, mine is.
Yeah, it should be 2014.
Should be through 2014.
Yes, that's correct. I believe the version that you had to sign should have 2014. Is that correct? Yeah. The official version that you'll sign is 2014.
Oh, okay. Your signed version, okay.
It might be good, though, just working from this, that there's a motion that it references that to be through December 31, 2014. Just for clarity.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Barb, you want to take this one on?
Let's keep reading it over and over.
Okay. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 11-6863, authorizing you to enter into the agreement with the Community Access Television of Salina Incorporated for public educational and governmental television programming services through a public access channel and a community interest channel, with that note that we, that the contract will read, was it December 31, 2014?
Let the motion die for lack of a second? Or is there a second?
Just as a clarification, Commissioners, officially, if there's a second, you still can debate that before you vote, so if there's a need to discuss any aspect, that'll get you over that hump and get you to that, just depends what your intent is.
Okay.
Okay, so motion dies for lack of a second. Does the commissioner want to make any other motion on this issue? Is there any other business?
Mayor, if I may, the reason I stepped out was to seek clarification from the city's risk manager, Nancy Schusler. Did have a chance to confirm with her relating to the community theater item. The claim was post-transition in ownership. The city, of course, ensured that structure at the time that it held ownership, and it refreshed my recollection, and Jason was correct, that as we transitioned, we were able to include the structure under the city's policy at considerable economies over a separate policy. So by contract, the city has continued to include it under its schedule. It's not a separate policy, it is just part of the city's umbrella.
Okay.
As to the structure, not the contents.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, on the last item, I think it would be important for you to vocalize what the concern might be, rather than drop that off with silence, because we're not aware, which is good, staff's not supposed to be necessarily.
I wasn't here for that study session, I was on vacation that week, so I'm not completely up to date on that particular study session when access came in, so I'm not comfortable on voting on something that I'm not 100% sure of.
Okay. Well, the result of the, just to summarize, the result of the study session was, at that point, it seemed like consensus, and that's, in study sessions, that's as far as we get is consensus, of a 40% funding. So there was anticipation, I think, by those there that there would be a contract unless there's a specific provision that needs to be modified at a 40% funding level, 40% of the franchise. I want to make sure you are clear, too, that if this is not, if there's nothing voted on, look at Greg to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly, but if no act- but if no action is taken, in essence, which is where we're at through the end of the year, the current agreement will not be renewed, there will be no agreement, and none of the cable franchise dollars will go into that function. I don't know if that's something that you understand or not, but I do want to make sure that you're clear on that aspect.
Well, I just personally have had a lot of complaints about community access. And I'm just not comfortable with seconding it.
Okay. I guess the question then, though, is, is that we don't know what to bring back, if anything, for you in the meetings before the end of the year. So, and the only way you can probably get there is through some conversation. So I don't know if you're looking for an agreement that has a different city role, an agreement for different services, an agreement with different dollars, or no agreement at all. The value of that is, is that there may be, there may be some concerns. Some of them may be valid, some of them may not be. And right now, nothing has been validated to your city staff. So I don't know what you're hearing out there, but all we've heard is a handful of complaints by about five or six people, but nothing's validated, not one thing so far. But with that said, what you need to weigh in that policy-wise is the full provision of services. Right now, city meetings, committee meetings, all of that to the public. And that's not to say that we couldn't come up with another way, but we would have to do that, because that would not be available to us if there's no agreement right now. So that's why I'm trying to figure out if there's something specific, if it's just you don't want to have access TV provide the service at all anymore. Trying to figure that out.
So if we don't approve the resolution at this time, we can do it at a later date?
Well, I'm going to defer to legal counsel for the logistics on the reconsideration and other aspects of that.
That's, there are a number of avenues available to you, of course, as a matter of either bringing it back to the agenda, back on your agenda, or directing staff at a subsequent meeting, or I think virtually all options are open to you. If that's, if you prefer to have it when all five of you are present, any number of... We can make whatever you want to have happen, I think, happen.
Would it be?
Figuratively.
Not necessarily another study session, but perhaps Commissioner Shirley could meet with you, Jason, to go over what was learned and what we went through in that study session, so that she...
Yeah, there's no question we can do that. The, but the problem is, is that doesn't get you where you need to be in the end. We still really need to get an idea from the rest of you, what your concerns are, or if you just don't want that service, or what it might be. We kind of need to know that, because we had a motion and no second out of four of you. Obviously, not, we don't know what Commissioner Jennings's perspective is on it either. But in order to have an agreement, you're going to have a motion, a second, and a majority vote. And presumably, if it comes up later, you'll have five up there, it just depends, but we're presuming that. So that means that odds are it'll take three folks to do that. And I don't count that right now, so mayor may not have it, I don't know.
Maybe I can vocalize my reason behind it. I mean, I've heard the same concerns you all have, too. But I'm weighing, I think, the greater good. Again, city staff has mentioned that nothing has been truly made of any of these remarks. I think we all, well, I shouldn't speak for you all. I know it's an important service to have community access in our community. But I think where Jason, the city manager, is going is, if there's something that we specifically don't like in this, we're going to need to have a study session or discussion up here now to say, I want to see this. You know, are we going to turn this into a performance, you know, based contract? But I think we need to decide something, for one, it's going to get pretty tight with holidays and everything, getting to the end of the year. And I think squeezing in a study session is going to be tough. And then we're going to be at the end of the year with no community access. And I don't think that's maybe what we all want, but we may have some concerns. And I think we need to either get those out now, so we can direct city staff to get this show on the road, so to speak, or we need to decide that we're just not going to have this and be done with it, so.
And I hope people understand my concern.
Yeah, for sure.
Since I'm physically not here to hear the study session or the complaints and concerns, you know, I don't want to just vote on something because, you know, somebody tells me I should vote on it.
Do you feel like, maybe if you get with Jason, that'll help you be a little more informed? And then Kay, is there some things maybe you want to direct? That there are concerns you may want removed from the contract, or?
Well, this would... This would be for how long a time? I mean, we would be approving it for how long?
It's a three-year contract.
He said three years, right?
Yes, three years. And again, if you want to modify and do a year, you can do that as well. You have the full flexibility in a lot of those aspects to modify the agreement.
So if we approved it, we could take a look at it again next year, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you could approve it with whatever terms, whatever contract terms. If they want to vary from what, if you want to vary it from what we have here for, say, a year, rather than three years, and then you'd be back this time of year a little earlier, probably budget time, talking about it. And then kind of the same, kind of the same process we had this year, you'd be back doing that again next year. You could do that.
And frankly, I'm in favor, but without a second from one of the other commissioners, it falls to a two-two vote and fails anyway, so that's why I didn't second it.
Well, I think the service they provide, especially the public meetings, is, you know, is certainly needed. You know, there just are some concerns, and I don't know that there's been any particular... I don't know if they've addressed any of those concerns, or if they know about them, or... And I'm sure that they're aware of a lot of those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, you've had copies of the information provided. The problem is, is you can line up a lot of people, and they can come up with anecdotal concerns. But for us to be able to do something about it, we have to, we have to have specifics and have them validated. Otherwise, we can say, well, let's have oversight over this, but I don't know what that means. And that's the problem that...
Well, I've had some written complaints.
So what would you want to have done?
Well, I just think some of those folks have a right to a hearing on their complaints, and...
With who?
With the director of community access.
And their board, maybe, or, I don't know how much direction we can give, and whether we want to micromanage their board.
Well, that's a good point, and that's part of the whole governance structure. I mean, they have a board, and the board is there for that governance role. We don't supplant ourselves into that role. And if you do, it gets really difficult. Now, if it is that, there's a lot of ways to handle this, though. If in the agreement, you want access TV to have a citizen complaint process in place, we could probably craft something up, talk with them, craft something up that ensures the ability to have your complaint heard by the director or the board, or whatever you might want to do. That is a reasonable process. It doesn't mean those folks are going to be happy with the outcome, because you can always, as you know, you can't always provide the outcome that they want. But it would ensure a process for dealing with it, that's probably something that we could do. That's a pretty reasonable thing that you would have in an agreement.
Well, I'll go ahead and second the motion.
We need to...
Thank you, into a reconsideration situation.
Reconsideration of the motion.
Do we want, maybe we should hear from the director and ask if they have anything in place, do you think, to answer your concern about that? Maybe we should ask if they've got a...
You can ask.
Yeah. Do you mind coming up? Sure. I'm just going to ask to sort of echo Ms. Crawford's sentiment. Is there a process in which the public can complain and say, we're not happy with programming, or, you know? We all hear that, but...
Yes, there is actually a couple of processes. The first thing is, we are free speech, and so a lot of programs happen on access television that not everyone agrees with. So if someone has an issue with a program, because each program is owned by the individual, that content is owned by the individual producer. So if someone calls, we do give that information to them, so that the person calling knows who the producer is. We kind of register the complaint and follow up with it. As far as the community, we do have a grievance policy, it's a written policy in our policies and procedures. They can come in, the first step is to work with me and see if we can get over that process. And then it goes on to the board. And so that is a process that we have used in the past. We have heard, to answer Kay's question, we have heard several of the complaints. They center around some of our programming. And this last year, we had an issue with one particular program that was brought in from, it's an external source program. Our board decided that it needed to be given to us and processed like every other program. If you wanted to create a program, you need to go through certain steps in, to ensure that you own the content, and it's put on like everything else. Because we really have to be careful that we treat you, you, and you exactly the same. Period. And this program is an external source program, and we changed the way we asked them to do it. And it has been a source of complaints from several members, a handful of the community members. But the board took it under several months of advisement. We really took this step, this step, and this step to make sure that we were doing what we thought was best for the community and for all the producers who are putting programs in. And it was not something taken lightly, something that took a lot of time, so. But yes, we have a grievance policy, it's been in place for over a year now, and it's available to anyone.
Any other questions?
Well, that's good to know, I didn't know you had a grievance policy.
Yeah, that's something I might have missed on the study session, too. So that helps me a lot, just what you said right there.
It is, and I also wanted, I just ran a report this morning, and I know this isn't, doesn't directly answer the question that you have. We, when we did our needs assessment, we actually asked several questions. And we've been going over above and beyond to try to address some of the things that the public appeared to want. One thing was the ability to go live more places than just in this room. And so I'm happy to tell you that we can go live. We've done a few things, we did Halloween, we've done, we did the naturalization ceremony at the Stiefel Theater. So we're trying more of those types of things, and we're happy with that. But in addition, we now have video on demand that people can get to in at any time. And just, for example, in August, that video on demand had two thousand one hundred and seventy-five hits. In September, with football, we had seven thousand four hundred and forty-one hits to our site. In October, four thousand four hundred and three, and in November, three thousand one hundred and ninety-four so far. Of those, just for example, we know people, thirty-four people in August watched a city commission meeting. So I have this report that I can tell you, people are watching. In September, we had six thousand six hundred people that watched a live program, which, there's only a few select things that are live, they're city commission. I hate to tell you if the county commissioners are more important than you guys, I think they have a little bit more controversy sometimes, which makes for better television.
More entertaining.
Once in a while, it may. But just for example, in November, so far...
It happens when you trample the Constitution.
In November, two thousand one hundred and ninety-five people have gone to an online live meeting. We can't tell you exactly which live meeting, just that they've gone live. I can tell you that on certain dates, how many people are reaching the site. The city commission meeting of October twenty-fourth, which was watched in November seventy-six times. So people are, and our job, which we're working on, is to get more of this information out to the public, to tell them that this is available, and it's flawless, it's a third party. Something we've also done is we've partnered with one of the radio stations here that has a popular website, and that's pushing a lot of business our way. So we're working more with the youth, we're working more with that to get that information out. And I think some of the complaints are that that hasn't happened in the past. And I think that that's something that we were shown more in our needs assessment, that we're working, which is exactly what a needs assessment is for, to push that information.
Just, maybe for the public's sake, and maybe a little mine as well, if you are to get a program that says maybe really controversial, what is kind of the process? I know in the past, people have said, oh, my God, this is pornography, or vulgarity, or whatever else. That's obviously the big one that comes up, nobody says, oh, this show's too religious, we got to pull it off. I mean, what is the process of that, and as part of free speech? Do you just air it and say, hey, look, we can't touch it? Or is there a revision, or something that goes on?
There is a program proposal, which is a contract that each producer signs with us. And part of that is asking them, is this adult in nature? Should it play during the hours? Safe Harbor hours, ten to six, we play somewhere between eleven and two AM. I mean, if they say no, it's not, and we play it during the day, and something happens, it's a legal issue against them, not from us. Which is part of the reason Jason is saying, if you were to get involved, there is some liability. And we make every producer sign that. The minute we get a call and someone says, you know, you've got porn on the site, we poll it, obviously. But we don't censor anything ahead of time. If you submit a show and we think it's perfectly fine, you've not led us to believe that there's any issue, we can play it at three o'clock in the afternoon. That has happened, and I run screening through, screaming through the building, asking, and we take it off as soon as we find out about it. But sometimes it does get out to the public before we notice that it's something that shouldn't be shown.
But there could be things shown from eleven, what'd you say, at ten to three, or eleven to...
Ten, ten to six, Safe Harbor hours for children. We usually try to keep things that are adult in nature from eleven to two. Because we do get some people who go out and film bands and things in the public that are maybe at adult entertainment, or, that's the wrong word, adult places where there are not children at the time. Not that we haven't had those things, but...
Mike, your new meetings may have to be at that eleven to two slot, they get a little more juicier over in that room, so. Okay, good, 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 thank you.
Thank you, you've helped a lot.
No, that did help a lot, thank you, Marcia.
Well, then I will reapply that motion then to adopt resolution eleven dash six-eight-six-three, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with community access television of Salina Incorporated for public educational governmental television programming services through a public access channel and a community interest channel. Again, with that one note, that the contract that the mayor signs will be December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Is there a procedural issue, Mr. Bankston?
Well, if it is your pleasure to consider the matter today, I do think it would be best to begin with a motion to reconsider. That will place it back before you. And it sounds like maybe that's...
And I read through that, but it looked like reconsideration was when a vote has been taken.
Well, there is that aspect. The, or you could simply unanimously add it to your agenda again, is one other way. As I say, there's a number of ways to get there.
How about this, how about this motion reconsider? Should we do that? Is that the easier, safer?
The mayor does make a good point.
Okay, what do you think?
I suppose the most technically correct would be to...
Okay, I'll make a motion then to put it back on the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that we put resolution eleven dash six-eight-six-three on today's agenda for reconsideration, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero.
No, I'd move that resolution eleven dash six-eight-six-three be adopted with the modification of the date to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the commission adopt resolution eleven dash six-eight-six-three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero. Any other business?
Mayor, I'd move at this time that we move into recess, into executive session for ten minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest of the matters, and we convene at five, I'm sorry. Actually, clock's a little slow, how about four fifty-nine-ish?
It's been moved and, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we're in executive session, anticipate any action?
We do not.